...on all matters before the commission other than site plans and subdivision plots, unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or development services department staff for details on council hearings. Applicants will be given 10 minutes to present their requests. Proponents and then opponents from the public are allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed five minutes for a rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. We'll start with the motion for approval of the meeting minutes.
I'll move.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Any abstentions, same sign.
I vote yes.
Katie, how, do you vote?
I vote, I vote yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. I'll go over the consent agenda items, starting with item number one, which is a request from Lawnwood Property LLC for the following regarding property located at 3004 30th Street. A, to determine as to whether, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with the plan DSM. B, amend the plan DSM to revise the future land use classification of the property from low-density residential to neighborhood mixed use. And C, to rezon property from N3B Neighborhood District to RX2 Mixed-Use District to allow continued use of the property for a business slash professional office use. Is there anyone in the public who would like this item pulled from the consent agenda? Anyone on the commission? Seeing none, the item will remain on the consent. Item number two is a request from City of Des Moines Fire Department for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, City of Des Moines Fire Station Number Four, for property located in the vicinity of 1505 Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway, and for the following type-two design alternatives in accordance with city code. A, to allow parking in the front yard where parking is allowed in the rear or limited interior side yard. B, to allow garage door access on a primary street facade where access is only allowed on an improved alley or non-primary street facade. C, allow nonoccupied space on the primary frontage where a minimum 30-foot depth of occupied space is required. And D, allow a reduced transparency of 3% on the east street frontage where a minimum of 12% is required on all street frontages. Is there anyone on the audience who would like this item pulled from the consent agenda and discussed tonight? Seeing none, anyone on the board, commission? Seeing none, the item will remain on consent. Item number three is a request from Kamen Holdings LLC for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, Kamen Warehouse, for property located at 2200 Maury Street, and for a type-two design alternative to allow 1.85% transparency on the east facade where a minimum 12% transparency is required. Is there anyone in the public who would like to pull this item from the consent agenda? Anyone from the commission? Seeing none, item three will remain on consent. And I will entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda items.
I move to adopt the consent.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign or any abstentions?
I need to abstain from two.
I need to as well.
Thank you.
As you want.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved. On the public hearing agenda items, we have one item, item number four.
Johnny, did we get Katie's vote? Sorry.
Sorry. Yes, I forgot about Katie. How would you vote, Katie, for the consent agenda?
I vote, I vote to approve.
Thank you. Moving on to the public hearing agenda item number four, which is a request from Norma Tamei, Carlos Tamei, and James Tamei for the following regarding two parcels located in the vicinity of 1201 Euclid Avenue. A, determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with the plan DSM. B, to amend the plan DSM to revise the future land use classification of the property from low-medium-density residential to community mixed use. And C, to rezon property from NX1 Neighborhood Mixed District to MX1 Mixed-Use District to allow the use of an existing building as a convenience store, commercial use. Shriyoshi will be presenting from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Shriyoshi Chakravarti, planning staff. The item before you is a rezoning request for a property in the vicinity of 1201 Euclid Avenue. The request is to rezon the property from NX1 Mix, Neighborhood Mixed District to MX1 Mixed-Use District to allow the use of, of the property and an existing building as a convenience store. This is the subject property. This is in the Oak Park neighborhood and it's in the vicinity of Euclid Avenue and 12th Street. As you can see here, the property includes two parcels. There is an existing, there's a parcel with an existing building to the south that fronts Euclid Avenue, and there's a vacant parcel to the north, right here. Euclid Avenue is a busy traffic corridor. It's also identified as one of the high-injury networks. In the city's Vision Zero Plan, has high number of crashes. The area here on Euclid Avenue includes a mix of some small-scale commercial as well as a mix of residential uses. Outside of that, the area includes predominantly a residential neighborhood. The property is currently zoned NX1. As you can see, the building had remained vacant for a while and in the past had been used for several small commercial uses. However, because it lost its legal nonconforming rights, now in order to be used as a convenience store, it needs to be brought to the, in conformance to the correct zoning district and therefore it needs to be rezoned to a MX1 district. I have some pictures here to give you context of the subject property and the existing building. This is the building on the southern parcel. It's about 672 square feet in size, so fairly small building. This is the front, fronting Euclid Avenue. This is looking at the building from the back, and as you can see, this is the vacant parcel. Euclid Avenue is right here. This is the intersection of Euclid Avenue and 12th Street. As you can see, the corner, that, there's, there's, there's an existing driveway off of 12th Street and it's in disrepair. It also doesn't meet the city code. It, it is, it butts almost up to the intersection and is almost on top of the ADA curb ramp. It's also in significant disrepair. This is another picture, again, just to kind of give you a context of the larger site and what we're looking at. It's a fairly compact site, as you can see, and it's right up to the intersection. There is the drive access off of 12th Street and there is a drive access off of Euclid Avenue as well. This is a sketch that the applicant provided with the application, and it shows generally the dimensions and the plan. This is the interior of the building, and I can come back to these if you have any questions moving forward. But the intent is to have a very small-scale cornered convenience store that will provide some convenience store-type items, including freezer items, non-alcoholic beverages, as well as tobacco sales. That is what is proposed right now. Currently, there are no alcohol sales proposed, and MX1 district does not allow alcoholic liquor sale. However, if the applicant in the future chooses to sell beer and wine, they would have to go to the zoning board of adjustments and seek a conditional use approval. We generally don't go into site-level details at the rezoning, but I just had some very ballpark measurements here, and I can come back to these later. But what, what's, what I'm trying to show here is the dimensions. As you can see, this is, this is Euclid Avenue. From the building up to the, up to the sidewalk, we're looking at about 26 and 1/2 foot. So just to give you a context of how compact the site, the site is and how little room there is to maneuver, we're decide to be brought to compliance with the, with the current design standards. And again, the, this is the dimension looking, this is 12th Street, so this is looking north. And if you look at the building up to the tree lawn, which also includes a four-feet, four-feet sidewalk, this is about 19, 19 feet, in terms of how much width we are looking Staff has reviewed this request, and we think in terms of use, the proposed use, this location does make sense because it's along a major corridor, it is near a neighborhood, and therefore it can serve the purpose of providing convenience store items to, to the adjacent neighborhood. So in terms of a use, it, it does make sense in this particular location. However, staff does have concerns with the site design, and given that the, the two accesses onto the site do not meet code, and Euclid being a high-traffic corridor and also having high injury crashes, we think that eventually, when the site is brought to compliance, those accesses need to be addressed, and the site needs to be brought to compliance. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request from NX1 to MX1 district, subject to two conditions. The first condition is to combine the two parcels that comprise the subject property into one parcel, and I just wanted to note that we did update the staff, staff report and we got rid of the, the provision to do it according to a plat of survey, and the reason being that it, the, the two parcels are under the same ownership and therefore there's alternative ways to combine without having to go through the whole plat of survey process, and so we wanted to leave that open, so that's been stripped out. And the second condition is that the property will be developed in accordance with the site plan, as per our standards. And the site plan would be for the entire site, which includes both the parcels, which will be combined into one parcel. And at that time, the two accesses that do not meet, meet the code will have to be closed off with the access, drive access that meets our current code and other site improvements that are required by Chapter 135. I do want to point out that staff does understand that the applicant currently is unable to make all the improvements in the immediate timeframe, and therefore staff is willing to work on a phasing plan with the applicant during the site planning process in order to give the applicant additional time to address these issues, to come up with a site plan for the entire site, and then make the improvements so that money is not spent on making short-term improvements which may not work in the long term when the entire site is brought into compliance. So that is staff's recommendation. And with that, the applicant did do a neighborhood meeting, and here's a summary of, of their, of their meeting. As you can see, there were three attendees at the, at the meeting. A lot of the discussion was around traffic and, and transportation issues along Euclid Avenue, and I'll let you scan through this really quickly. There were also some concerns brought forward about lighting in the area and potentially additional vehicular traffic as a result of this proposed use. We did get some comment cards back. This one is in opposition, and I'll just let you all read through each one of these. As you will see, that we did receive the comment cards back. A lot of the, the comment cards that we received in opposition and in support were within the notification boundary. They were not within the 200-feet radius, therefore it did not have an impact on the, the percentages for and against the project. So with that, I'll take any questions at this time.
Thank you. Shriyoshi, any questions?
So I was confused on the two plots. So is, is it just that yellow box? Are you talking about the space to the west of it, or where's the two? Or is it just that, is that dash line representing the break between two plots?
So...
Is it that black line? What's, what's the...
That's the, that's the lot line. So currently, these are two separate parcels, but they're under the same ownership. The applicant has purchased both of these parcels. They are now, this black line, like you correctly observed, is the, is the lot line, so that divides it into two separate parcels. So that's one of our zoning conditions, is to combine these two parcels into one parcel so it can be treated as one property.
Okay, so, yeah, because that being black and that yellow threw me off. So, okay, so once they're combined, though, it seemed like you're arguing right now that, hey, we want to do this, but there's no room to actually operate on this anyway. Once it's combined, are we thinking that parking would actually be in the back or something, so this is possible to do? Or are we saying that, because it sounded like the presentation said, yeah, we'll do this, but there's no way it's possible to actually operate this on this when we, once we get to the planning part?
Yes, we, it's, it's hard to make that determination without looking at an actual site plan, but like you saw, just eyeballing and having, just looking at approximate numbers and the location of the driveways, it's going to be very difficult for the applicant to design the site just within that small parcel to the south. However, if the, if the two parcels are combined, it does give the applicant enough room to design it adequately. With, they, they can, they can move the parking to the north, in the northern parcel. Our preference would be to, to, to eliminate the, the, the drive access off of Euclid and move the drive access on 12th further back from the alley, which is what our code requires. If there is a way to get an access from the alley, that's what would be required.
And at that point, oh, sorry, at that point, could they choose to have the building, like, on 12th, 12th Street instead of Euclid, like, facing 12th? Does that make sense?
I...
Like, the front of the building? Could that be facing 12th instead of the front facing Euclid?
Um, I, I think that depends. They would probably have to make some changes to the, to the building itself. If they're wanting to reuse the existing doors, then I don't know how they're going to make it work.
If I could, I, I do think the code would, and our own desires for, you know, engaging the primary street, I think the building would continue to be oriented towards Euclid Avenue. Maybe, I mean, you could conceivably have the door at the corner, it's more of a corner function. The other thing I do want to throw out there, since I'm rambling here or talking, is that although often we would look for an alley access, I think in this particular case, I think it might make sense to have the drive off of 12th Street a little further away, you know, a little closer to the commercial street, but just far enough away from Euclid that it's safer than what's there today.
I have a question on the, I'm trying to make sure I'm understanding the scope of the question. If the actual primary frontage of the building became 12th, wouldn't we then have a problem with orienting the parking lot? And then, wouldn't that turn that into a side lot, causing other challenges? Wouldn't we want to have the primary onto Euclid, just to make sure we don't have other issues later?
No, I mean, a lot of our design standards actually push parking to the back of the building, and, you know, the building's supposed to engage the street pedestrian realm, so...
If the primary road becomes 12th, wouldn't that not any longer have the parking on the back and now be on the side?
Yeah, but I, I, we would treat Euclid as the primary frontage, so I don't, I understand what you're saying. You, is it becoming a side yard at that point? Is what we think of it as the backyard becoming a side yard? But we would still treat, I don't see as, Euclid is the, actually, I think it's probably a mapped street. We have map principal streets, and I believe Euclid is one of those. It's certainly hierarchically is more significant.
Yeah.
So it's going to be the one that we're going to orient, or orientate the building towards. But that doesn't mean the driveway would need to come off of that just to, I mean, that's, if you think about our very pedestrian corridors, Ingersoll example, you know, parking lots are off the back, buildings are up at the street, still the front door faces Ingersoll. I think one of our thoughts here is that the front area is challenged to have vehicle access to it. Shriyoshi correctly noted that we can't exactly say that tonight because we don't have a scale drawing in front of us, but just eyeballing it, it doesn't seem plausible. Seems more likely that they'd have a drive, you know, the parking's behind the building, the drive's coming off the side.
Now, what would happen to the concrete in the front of the building and to the east?
Do you want...
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, Shriyoshi.
No, no.
I got to earn my keep, so I'll keep talking.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll try, and then you can, you can help me. Once the rezoning process has gone through, the applicant will be required to bring the site to compliance. They would have to meet the impervious surface percentages and so on, and so that would have to be reviewed and, and the design would have to be looked at in order to ensure that they're providing enough landscaping, that they have enough pervious area and the impervious area.
It's likely that most of that pavement's coming out. I, we can't say that for a fact, but it's, most of it would be unnecessary. A lot of it's in the required setback for landscaping. So even at a minimum, if there's vehicle movement up in the front, there's going to need to be, you know, separation between the property line and the pavement for landscaping treatment. And some of that actually might even be in the right of way today, which isn't, shouldn't be there.
What kind of a timeline do you have in mind for the phasing, and how does compliance work with that?
At this point, we don't have an answer on that. We've left that open. Once the applicant begins the site planning process and comes up with the design, we want to work with them to give them flexibility, and we'll work with them to come up with the timeline that works for them. But that's, that's open right now. We don't, we haven't made a determination on that yet.
Two questions. One, is there any adjacent street parking on either of these two streets?
There is, I believe. I think there's parking on one side of the street.
No, there's no parking there on that street.
Is it signed?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah, and as you can see, I just wanted to pull this picture up here. This is very challenging right here because of the way, the, the stop sign is further behind the, behind the driveway, and if, you can, you can have cars lined up, queued up here trying to make a right turn onto Euclid Avenue. So on-street parking would be quite challenging to have.
And the second question, what would be the minimum amount of parking that might be required for this use?
So I believe for this use, it's one space per 400 square foot of floor area, and the building is about a little over 600, so I think about two spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Which of the existing street access is most dangerous? They both look terrible.
Um, I, I think it would be Euclid, just, again, it being a primary street, it carries more traffic, and it's an identified high-injury network corridor. So the intent is to reduce driveways and reduce as many conflicts as possible. So it, from a safety standpoint, the closing off of Euclid is very critical. Like Jason said, we would want an access off of 12th, but the current location of the access off of 12th, this doesn't meet the code, so it would have to be moved further back, further behind the stop sign.
When did this last function as a retail shop? Do you have any idea?
Um, that, I'll leave that question to the applicant. I know that it's been used as a retail use in the past. It did change ownership and remained vacant for over six months, which is why it lost the legal nonconforming rights.
So final clarification, if I'm saying, so you're looking at this, we're trying to change the zoning tonight, so planning doesn't really, plan doesn't matter right now, but it sounds like where this would go is, you know, all that pavement up front is really not really happening. The stop sign is back because we have a driveway. If we're redoing this, we're probably taking both those driveways out, moving the stop sign forward, adding the sidewalks, putting in a parking lot on the back with a new curb cut in. Is that really just the general gist of the minimum of what you'd be expecting at the next phase for this?
Yes, that, once the rezoning is completed, as with all projects, it's, it's required to go through the design process with an approved site plan, and then the site needs to be improved according to the site plan, and that addresses most of the things that you mentioned. So once the applicant has come up with a site plan that's been approved by staff, then they would have to work on getting those improvements done to bring the site to compliance. And the reason we went through all of the design issues is because we do see those, those issues coming up, and at the, the site planning stage would be when those issues would have to be addressed.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're on the same page of what step two looks like, so we're not saying, oh, we'll do this, and then this is, the rest is easy and we'll worry about little details, but like, because it looks like there's a major overhaul of a lot, right?
Yes, and that is why staff is willing to work on a phasing plan because it, it is quite a bit of improvement for the applicant, and we want to give them time to work that out.
And we, and we also want to be transparent, too. Like, at this process, we don't want it to seem like at the zoning stage, their thing, you know, it's all downhill after this. There's still a lot of work to do, and it's serious work with the, with the cost associated with that.
I think this is a perfect segue to invite the applicant to present and tell us more about their ideas for the site. Assuming the applicant's present?
Yes.
Please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you have 10 minutes, and then you can sign in on the piece of paper thereafter.
Hello, my name is James Tamei. I am a owner of the 1201 Euclid Avenue building. Also, co-owners are my mom and my dad. They are right back there behind me, Carlos and Norma Tamei. This right here is a business partner with the Oak Park Mini-Mart. This right here is a business partner with the Oak Park Mini-Mart, Antonio Aguilar. And just real quick to answer that question that was left lingering is, I believe this was last utilized as a, what was it, antique store? That, I believe, came to an end in 2019. That was operational from, I believe, 2017 to 2019. Prior to that was a appliance store. They fixed as well as sold new and used washing machines, you know, just appliances. That was there for many years, as long as I can remember when I was a child. I don't know exactly how long it was there, maybe over 10 years. But yes, since 2019, I believe, it has been non-functional for business use. To answer that question, I believe Antonio, Antonio here has several things he might want to add as well.
So the whole gist of, not the whole gist, but a little bit more information about the, the day-to-day. Hours would be nine, 10 a.m., 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. And then we're currently working with a couple of vendors from around town, Coke, Monster, Bimbo hopefully, and then also bringing in some tobacco products. Looking to work with a couple more local vendors, like tortilla vendors and anything that we can work with, with local vendors. And also try to help a little bit with local sports groups. James has a little bit of a boxing background and I have a little bit of a soccer background, so hopefully work with a couple of groups, one way or another. The target is foot traffic. I know Soroshi mentioned a little bit about having a convenience store close to the vicinity of the, of the neighborhood, so that's the, the target. We do plan to add a little bit more lighting on the outside, or a lot more lighting on the outside, as well as having cameras with a live feed on a hard drive and also on a cloud. The plan would be to have two full-time employees at all times and then also with our support there at all times. And then I think everything else was kind of brought forward as well on what she mentioned.
Can you talk a little bit about the, the sign of the site? The questions that were discussed, timing, what your phasing plan is?
Sure.
So in terms of timing, we really don't have, as Shiroshi said, an exact timeframe just due to the fact that we don't know exactly how much the renovations are going to cost to keep everything up to city standard. What was the other question?
Any concerns with the comments made tonight about paving and putting the parking on the back or closing the driveways?
Yes, so this is a two-parcell address space. The, so the, right behind, right here is one as well, and then from here north would be, I'm sorry, south would be the other. This building right here in the corner, I want to say just about six foot out, is actually mine. The rest belongs actually to my mom, who is right there. I would, you know, like to put parking right there on that side, however, she has plans for her lot that she purchased. I'm not too sure what her plans consist of. What happened was, I actually purchased this building in 2021, January of 2021, I purchased this building. Two years later, the lot next door goes up for sale and my, my mother, she purchases She works to, with me, we combined it all into one because the lot in itself was too small to build or make any projects on, so legally she would have to have combined it with mine. So we are, we, we, we did that. As to now, that's, they are still two separate parcels. I, I don't know if exactly what the future holds for the parcel that my mother purchased, but I would like to turn it into a parking lot, work with the city, see what is acceptable. But in terms of the current driveways, the exit from, the entrance from Euclid Avenue, the entrance from 12th Avenue, I do believe that, you know, they do need some updates and we do want to work with the cities to help get it up to standard.
Any questions for the applicant?
Has, has the city helped at all as far as budget on expectations? I mean, the concrete work alone seems like you're in the 50 to 100 grand range. I mean, how, how much has that budget been helped with?
Yeah, I agree. It's, you know, as Shiroshi said, they were willing to work with me in terms of what needs to be done now just to get it up and running and, and as a plan to what will be need to be done in the future. Currently, it's all just out of pocket, mine. I haven't actually made any major renovations currently. I don't really know what renovations I need to make at this time, but in terms of funding, it's, it's just out of pocket from, from my pocket. If there's any, if there's any city funding assistance, I would, you know, I'm all ears.
I was, I was just meaning, I was just making sure that it's all clear as we go, is like how much the things cost. I don't want to be a situation where I'm always saying like, oh man, we got this one done and then this piece is that, because it's translating into real numbers.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure we're on the same page of helping, making sure everyone's finding real numbers, no one gets, especially if you're going out of pocket, no one gets worked into a corner.
Yeah.
You had mentioned you're not sure what your mother plans to do with her property.
Yes.
But it states right here that the two parcels will be combined.
Yes, so.
So do you understand that?
So yes, we will, we will combine them regardless, just so that legally that she was able to, whatever project she has desired to accomplish is legally able to. Because that, because without us combining the two parcels, legally it's not big enough to do any project on at all.
Yeah, I just.
I just wanted to make sure, because you said something that may be conflicted with that a little bit ago, so that it has to be combined, not remain two separate parcels.
Thanks, Rick. I'm glad you kind of brought that up. I just want to reiterate that what we are recommending to staff, if, should this, this condition move on from this, this, this board is going to make a recommendation to the city council, ultimately the city council will make the decision on whether to rezone the property or not. And if there's zoning conditions, you'll need to, you'll have to sign prior to the council's hearing that you agree to those, so you have opportunity to look at and think about it. But I do want to be clear that our position from the staff perspective is this site, the parcel to the south is not big enough to do what you want to do. We, we're only supporting this if this is, you know, if you move to make this one site with the one building and you do the improvement, so.
This building looks, actually, this is a question to staff, okay? The building to me looks like a 1950s or a 1960s filling station. Was that a use of the building at one time?
Yes.
Yes.
It was a Conoco gas station back in 1960 and on. Yes.
Oh, thank you. Does anyone deny that?
No, I think that's probably accurate. I, I do want to say we, for, we need to have people, I mean, I think, I'll report, I'll, we've had the audience, because you're not being picked up on the system or on, we're on TV and all that stuff. So we, it sounds like from the audience that there's recollection of it being a gas station. I think it makes complete sense from it. I, I don't know for a fact, but, I mean, you're looking at the building, looking at the way it's laid out. The SASSR record, just quickly looking at that, says that maybe it was built in 1930. I don't, that seems may have touched old, but maybe there's an older building underneath there.
Well, thank you, thank you. Let me ask my question, please. That, if that makes sense to other people, it certainly makes sense to me. I can think of, I mean, three or four sites like this across the city that were, you know, originally built for filling stations and that are hard to sell because the site is, the sites aren't clean, right? So my question is, has anybody examined, you know, the status of this in terms of environmental acceptability?
Do you know, when you did your due diligence to purchase the property, is this a contaminated site or anything? Did that come up?
I, I, I'm not sure, no. At least I'm unaware currently.
I'm looking at something we have, we have some data from the state on this. It is showing that at one time it had underground storage tanks, it was a Conoco. It's possibly, it would have to be, you'd have to check into this, but there's a possibility that it had leaking at one point. But that's, that's not information that the city, we don't house that, it's not, we don't regulate, that's a state-level environmental. So we can certainly provide that information to you after the fact, but.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Can I follow up on one question? If these are combined, this is the primary structure, that would mean that there's no other structures that are going on or every other structure would have to be ancillary? What is the, when he's talking about the impact of his mom's plans and his plans, are there restrictions that there be no other buildings on? Is that what I heard?
We didn't write it that explicitly would say that, but I mean, this is the principal building. I, I don't think there's enough space to meet the requirements to get another one on here just because of the size of the site, but we didn't, we could add a condition that would explicitly prohibit that as a possibility. It's probably not likely to happen unless this one's tore down and you probably end up with just a single building, maybe positioned differently, but certainly if the commission would like to suggest that, that a condition of that nature, it could be added.
Any other questions for the applicant?
That would be an awesome future plan to just, after some time, get some money coming in, tear it down, build a whole new vicinity. That'd be awesome. I'd do that now if I had the money, to answer, to go along with what you were saying.
Thank you. Don't forget to sign in, please. Now we have the opportunity to hear from any proponents, any people in support of this project. You have five minutes if you want to come up. Anyone in support? Anyone in opposition? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes and you can sign in afterwards.
My name is Josh Hunnell. I own properties at 1219 Euclid and 1305 Euclid. Overall concern is just 12th and Euclid is pretty heavily traveled. If you go there at any rush hour, morning or evening, I would think it'd be difficult, even if they re-moved and moved the in and out, the driveway, traffic backs clear up. Then in fear with that, I'd be fearful of what it would do to the alleyway. It already has enough random foot traffic from the alley or from the river that comes up from all the people down there and I don't want any more traffic like that running through. It's tough even turning on to 12th from Euclid. I hear the horns honking all day long because people can't merge, they can't turn, so I would think that that would be an issue. Every time I go out there and mow my lawn, I have to look for broken glass, all kinds of garbage, cigarette stuff. I'm afraid that the foot traffic for a place like this is going to bring even more garbage to my yard that I'm not a fan of. So yeah, that's basically just between the traffic and just bringing more, I'm afraid, through the alley. How's it going, people going to get in and out and just the garbage from the street and everything else that already collects? I would be fearful just they'd be adding to it.
Thank you.
And I've been there for 45 years. I can answer any other questions you got about the property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents? You're welcome to come up, have five minutes, please state your name and address and sign in afterwards.
Hello, I am Deb Cameron and my address, actually, a mile away from here, I live at 2515 Ashby Avenue across. I grew up in the house where he lived, so understand I am 66 years old and we moved in there 60 years ago. I've seen a lot of accidents. I commend them for what they want to do, but I also have seen 12th Street, because I go Euclid, 12th Street up to Ankeny, and I have seen the traffic backed up on 12th Street, backed on Euclid, trying to turn on to 12th Street. It's congestion. Over the years, there have been a lot of accidents. It's slowed down with the three lanes, but with the three lanes, there is also more traffic. People have slowed down. You go through rush hour, you'll see cars backed on up and now they're going to extend the three lanes down to the river, so it's going to get even worse. I know they've mentioned a convenience store, there is Lynn Supermark, which is not very far away, there's Fairway Onup, there's a high V the other direction, there's other places to go for this stuff. So I, as a person who travel that area a lot and spend a lot of time, because I go over and spend time with my grandkids there, I am against this. Again, I commend them for wanting to do something because I've seen different things coming and out. I walked home and used to say hello to Joe that owned the gas station there and he was a very friendly person. But I just don't see that it fits what the neighborhood needs. I've seen too much drug traffic go through, just a lot of different things. So that's my opinion as a person who lives a mile away but spends a lot of time in the area and grew up in the area and I'm concerned and I want to see it grow. So I'm not against their idea, I'm against the location of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents of this project? Any neutral? If not, the applicant does have five minutes for rebuttal, if you wish.
To address some of those concerns, in our neighborhood meeting that was held past, last Thursday, there was, the three, the three participants that did show up did, they, they agreed that it would bring convenience to the area. They'd all agreed that you do have to drive a little bit extendedly to get to the nearest sort of convenience store, as opposed to just having it literally a block away or so. The, also, in the neighborhood meeting was, was proposed that maybe the city could get involved in putting a traffic light at the intersection of 12th and Euclid. They feel that would be something beneficial for the, for the neighborhood in terms of 12th Street trying to muscle their way in to oncoming traffic just to make a left or right turn. Our intention is not to provide inconvenience, but rather convenience to the area. They, in the neighborhood meeting was, was mentioned, they would like, you know, a nice machine. We, we will have one, were we to be allowed to open up. There is a park across the street that, it's in walking distance, Highland Park, that we feel we would serve that park well. You know, a lot of children go to that park, a lot of families go to that park, we might have some essential. We might have some essential supplies that would be, you know, very handy to have us in that vicinity. That is all.
Thank you. That will close the public hearing and remind the commissioners that we're looking at the rezoning of the property. Any thoughts or discussions?
I think that the use is good. You know, I think that the idea for a neighborhood spot makes a lot of sense on this corner, but I'm, I'm really worried that the phasing piece might turn, might go long. And, and I really think the curb cuts are a big problem because all the comments that we've heard have been around traffic, and those two curb cuts are exactly where you would put them if you want to cause accidents. And so the phasing idea feels overly risky for the benefit of the store, which I think is real. But I just, I want, I wish there was a way to get the traffic access figured out right away.
I would also echo that a lot, where I guess I support the rezoning, which is the focus of tonight, but I worry about, it seems like the phasing would have to deal with the removal of the first curb cuts first and all the sidewalking and everything else, which makes me wonder if, you know, we just need to be fully clear and transparent with what the cost is of what we're actually doing, right? This is a project that is not a developer-initiated. This is, this is not a situation where there's significant information asymmetry here that I think worries me as I look at it, because we want to make sure these businesses exist. This is exactly what we want the city to have more of. I think we just, I would caution staff more than anything that we need to be aggressively clear, that everyone knows what we're doing and how much it costs each step of what we're doing, because phase one of phasing looks expensive to me.
One of the comments in terms of a solution is installing a red light. There is a red light one or two blocks away. I can't remember which, maybe, I think it's to the west. And so there is another red light nearby. The point I want to make is that after Euclid was redesigned a year and a half or two years ago as a trial, it was redone, as we heard, in a one-way street, I mean, with a passing zone or a turning zone in the middle and the right of way on either side, you know, what I'm trying to say. The fact of the matter is that if you go up and use Euclid today, you can be backed up a long way, like four or five blocks. And that's just a reality, okay? That, it's a state, it's a federal highway, highway number six. It gets, when you think about Des Moines going east and west, you think about University, you think about Euclid, and you think about Douglas. And Euclid gets a lot of traffic. There is going to be a public meeting for the neighborhood. It either has been a couple days ago, or it's going to be in the near future to review this new redesign of Euclid Avenue. And there's considerable, considerable opposition in the neighborhood to the way the street is now. I say this to emphasize the fact that if a red light is considered to be a use to help improve this rezoning and the business, I think that's unrealistic.
I think it's, a lot of good information's been shared, but I will, the best thing to do is move staff and allow them to work with the applicant to see what they can do with the site. So that's a motion.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion on the floor for approval of staff recommendation. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Katie, how would you like to vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Any directors or committee reports?
The only thing I'd like to share is that I don't think we've had the opportunity to introduce Maria Smart, who's a newer member of our staff. She's been with us for about six months, but I think this is the first time I've had the chance to embarrass her publicly. So want to welcome her aboard, and she got lucky tonight. Her item stayed on consent. So it's always, that's how we view it, you know, staff, as we're getting ready. We're like, you know, keeping the fingers crossed, but make sure you don't have to present. But anyway, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, right now, we don't have any items on the agenda for the next meeting, but we're not, I don't think we're calling it tonight yet. We still, there's still a chance something could be added to it, but obviously, we will be mindful of timing and scheduling and being respectful of whether or not we put something on there.
Thank you.
Some adjourned.